No, but I'm saying that because of this special treatment, I'm not gonna do it.
Hi Judy.
Hello.
How are you?
Okay. I was just working on the maps.
I think there'll be a few more, like we have a few more in between, but we definitely got the lump done.
Okay. Hi Melissa.
Hi Peter.
Hi everybody.
I knew Brian wasn't going to be here, but I don't see Connor, but we do have a forum.
Okay. Let's see.
Looks like Peter got a haircut.
Uh. Yeah, kinda.
Yeah, I guess kinda.
That's an interesting answer.
Uh, okay, what do we got? One, two, three.
Five.
Four, okay, so we have a quorum. Okay, so it is a little after seven o'clock. And I'd like to call to order the regular Zoom meeting of the Woodstock Planning Board for June 17th, 2021. And Melissa, do you have any updates to the agenda at this point?
I do not.
Okay, so the first thing is the minutes from May 20th. If everybody's okay with them, I'd like to accept them and put them on the record.
Some moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey. Okay, so under Communications and Announcements, Memorandums from John Lyons regarding Tsumphus and Kujulian, which I have to admit, between that and the other letter from the law about Kujulian, I thought we were on the other property of theirs. I did not realize that they had another property, so.
Yeah, I was just noticing that we got two different cases.
Yeah, I didn't even open it. I said, well, I know this one, and then so there we go. Anyway, we have a letter from the Building Department regarding the Berithville Center, which we've been through that. There's a talk of towns and topics. There's a letter from the Assessor regarding the Cooligen property, but not the one we're doing tonight, the one on
Raycliff.
Right, exactly, which basically says what we said, which is that you gotta get a subdivision if you want to subdivide the property again. And then there's the email from Jackie regarding the moratorium, which we did go through and talk about that. There's the email from Ken Panza regarding his suggestion about the mapping for the, for the Wellhead Protection Area and the, and the Town Aquifer.
We got that separately, didn't we?
We did. And he included the map, but I agree with Judy that it doesn't follow property lines, so.
But if it follows, if it follows natural resources inventory, then we've still got it mapped because they did that, so.
Well, he can include it, I think, four different maps, but yes.
I'm gonna have to find his and see how it looks, because I didn't actually spend any time with it.
Yeah, he included, I believe, four maps for that.
We have got so many emails in the last week that I can't keep track of it all.
All right, and then there's the email regarding the Crown Castle T-Mobile, which is quite a long email and quite technical. We will get to that later. So today we have one, two, three, four sketch plan reviews.
Five, I think.
Five, actually, sketch plan reviews. So to start off with is the new property for us, which a Cooligen property, which is up on Day Road. So if Stephen is here from North River, would you please go ahead and explain to the board what you are proposing?
Stephanie.
Hi, it's Stephanie.
Hi, Stephanie.
Hi. How are you?
Okay.
Okay, so the proposed development of this parcel that we're presenting to you today is the construction of a single, a one-bedroom guest cottage. And the site plan that was submitted shows the proposed full development of the property. It eventually building a second structure, which would be at that time the primary residence for the property owner. So it's a sequence project where the initial structure would eventually become the accessory apartment under your accessory apartment law. And it complies with the guidelines for accessory apartments. It's just that the initial status of the dwelling unit that, that would be built in the first phase would be, I guess, the primary dwelling unit on the property. The property previously had a, I think, a three-bedroom residence that was removed. And it's vacant now. It has part of the development of the parcel that's proposed would also be the installation of a new septic system for the dwelling unit, the, the one-bedroom guest cottage, which would eventually be expanded to serve the second structure on the property. But the, again, the application in front of you is for the first phase, and so the materials that we provided describing the architecture which you're reviewing under the scenic overlay guidelines pertain just to the initial structure that is proposed for the property.
Is this the property that we're talking about?
It is.
According to the information that I got from the DEC, this has a conservation easement on it. That's why it's in yellow.
Yep, we have information that was documented in the deed about that conservation easement. I don't know if, if that's documentation that you have already, or if not, I can send it to Melissa after this meeting.
Well, my only question is what limits are placed on the property by that being a conservation easement?
Of course. The conservation easement was created encompassing this property and the one to the north originally. And it limited subdivision of that larger prior parcel to two lots in total, and it has since been subdivided. That second lot was ceded to New York State at some point. And so the, the subdivision is one of the controls that the easement imposes. Other controls include a limitation on the development area in each parcel, which would be two acres in total. It stipulates removal, well, some controls on removal of vegetation, preservation of natural vegetation, visibility of structure, materials that are compatible with the, with the natural landscape of the property. And there are, there's some reference to where a, an access road can be built, but because the road that serves as a driveway to the, on this property is already existing, so that's not really applicable to the proposed development.
All that stuff I just turned on indicates that it is in the overlay.
Yep.
And I turned on the contour lines just to see why those roads were like that, and that all makes sense. It looks, to the information I have, like the property north and east of it is land conservancy, with Suckland Conservancy, but it sounds like you've taken all this into account, so that's all I need is to know.
Thanks. I can provide the conservation easement documentation to Melissa after the meeting so that you can read the specifics of the language, but just in general, it, it, it conforms very closely to the scenic overlay guidelines. The intentions are really compatible. They're controlling visibility of structures, they're controlling exterior materials, placement of, placement of structures, preservation of natural vegetation, and some controls on landscapes, so we saw that, you know, this project with the designed intention to comply with, with the scenic overlay guidelines is also compatible with the conservation easement guidelines.
Guess the only question I have is about whether there would be tree cutting involved for the septic field?
Well, yeah, of course, in the footprints of the septic field, that would require clearing right there.
But that's within the two acres you were permitted, is that the idea?
Yeah, and I can show, I can show the area of clearing on an update to this map if that helps for for your review as we continue.
Thank you.
Yep.
So the, the building that is showing on the, on the map that Judy put up is no longer existing, has been demolished?
That's right.
That's a 2016 map, so they haven't done the flyover since then. Soon, I hope.
Peter, is Max and Resnick online?
Yes.
Yes, John, I'm here. Hi, John.
Hello, Max. Do you have comments here?
No, and, and it's not, I know Judy just thought it was our land up there, but it's not. I think that might be DEP Judy or DEC. Well, I got this from Ingrid, so. Yeah, it's not, it's not us. And my comment in general always is in the scenic overlay that the people should follow the rules of the scenic overlay.
Okay, so the, the two issues that come up, one is, you know, the use of the buildings, which goes through the Building Department, if they've approved, if they've approved these uses, because as you say, there's specific requirements for guest cottage and so on versus residential, but that's up to the Building Department. So for us, the main thing that we do on a scenic overlay is to, number one, ensure that the site and the building on the site will not be visible to public lands, to, you know, to walkways, trails, and to other buildings. And then the main issues that we deal with are, of course, the glazing, which has to meet a standard for our scenic overlay requirements. And lighting, which all has to be dark sky compliant, and your cut sheet should show each of the exterior lights that you have that comply to that. And then, of course, roofing has to meet our standards for color and material, and and to make sure that whatever clearing takes place does not expose the building to out, to other locations. So to do that, we need to have site reps go up and take a look. And now the question is, have you staked out anything, the proposed new buildings, if that's been staked out in any way?
No, but we can easily do that.
Okay, so if you could stake out the proposed buildings, and the road is, is existing, you're not gonna create a new road, correct?
The road that is running north-south along the western property line is existing, we would need to run a spur off of it to get driveway access to the guest cottage.
Okay, so.
It's shown on the plan.
So we need to, you know, make sure we see that.
Okay, we can put flags along the route of that.
Right. So basically, this is a sketch plan review. Let me ask the other board members if they have questions regarding this application before we get site reps assigned. Anybody on the board have questions? Okay, so mostly we need to get some, some reps to go up and look at the site so that we can schedule another review.
This is on Day Road, guys.
So is someone able to get up there to Day Road and take a look at the site?
How bad of a drive is it up there? Is it a crazy steep thing?
I drive, I drive a, a regular car up there, and you don't even, you don't even need high, high clearance, it's fine.
Okay, all right.
I mean, maybe, maybe not in February, but it's fine now.
All right, I can go.
Okay. All right, good. Now I'll try to make it up there also to take a look. So if nobody else on the board has any questions, then we can just get the site inspection done and then schedule a, a new review. I have looked at your plans, but again, it will be critical to make sure that your glazing meets the town specs for the glazing allowed for a square foot per elevation.
Yeah, I actually, I'm aware of that requirement, and I addressed it in the cover letter that I provided with the application. This is a passive house design building, which means energy efficiency to a certain design standard, and it requires south-facing glazing for solar gain as part of the energy model protocol that we're meeting. And so we are exceeding 50% on the south side for that reason. So that's one thing, and the other is that the triple pane windows that we need to use in order to hit our energy efficiency targets are not available with the films that, that are the, that are listed as meeting the acceptable glare control standard that's in the, in the code. I had a, a project a couple of years ago in front of your board, you know, a different, it was a different board, but, you know, it was in terms of who was serving at the time, but it was, it is also a passive house project. It's on Mount Guardian Road. And our application and discussion of that project did review and discuss the particulars of the glazing and in that there needs to be south-facing. The energy standard requires, you know, an abundance of south-facing glazing, and that we're, we have limited opportunities to meet the the glare control standard specifically, but the, the deep overhangs on this particular structure are meant to control glare and visibility of those glass surfaces, and it's not a large structure. It's not, you know, it's, you know, a one-story essentially, so we don't have a, a large amount of square footage of glass area. It's just that we weren't able to hit the 50% target.
Okay, I remember the one on Guardian. But I can just tell you, it's something we're gonna look at very closely.
Yeah, understood.
Because we do not want glare coming off of glass that can be seen throughout the town.
Peter, just to the reason we have the law in place that we do is because of a house on Day Road. The reflections and the general visibility from most of the town was amazing. And certainly, if you go to the Woodstock golf course, you can see just about everything on Day Road, and Day Roads, DayRoad can be an issue, and I think that not meeting the relevant activities standards is an issue.
I agree, John. I agree. I'm, you know, I'm all in favor of passive solar buildings. I built them myself. But when you're in the scenic overlay, it brings up another issue. Yes, yes, Stuart?
Yeah, I have a question for Stephanie, too, actually. First one is, what is material that you're unable to get that you would have wanted to get?
For the windows, you mean?
Yes.
The specification of the low glare or glare-controlled glass is what I'm unable to get because of the supply chain sourcing that the European window manufacturers use in their factory production.
And is that, is that inability attributable to the pandemic?
No, it was present to, it was, that was the situation two years ago when we were trying to source it for the Mount Guardian Road project.
And it's still not, it's still not available?
Yeah, it's just not, it, it, they, they have their sources, their European sources of glass, and they aren't able to, you know, customize the, the surface characteristics of the glass in the way that American window manufacturers are able to.
So had you considered sourcing it from American manufacturers, or is that not appropriate?
They, even the passive, the passive house windows that are produced in the United States use components in glass from European countries. So we're, we're kind of stuck. I'll, in between now and our next meeting, I'll have another look and see if there are any opportunities that I missed in my last review, but so far, that's the story.
Thank you.
Okay, you know, I'm familiar with the one on Guardian. I, I did the inspection of that. And we let that be because there was nothing that was visible to that location. The one, as John points out, the one on Day Road is extremely visible to the town.
Well, I mean, the location of this cabin is actually not because it's up in the woods, so we're not talking about the escarpment that, you know, that is that visibility area where the house was located previously that was taken down. This is a, this is, this is in the woods and, you know, several, let's see. I would say 100 feet, 120 feet into the wooded area. So yeah, there'll be some clearing around it and for the construction of the, of the building, but it's, it's not at a point of exposure on the site.
Okay, as, as you probably know, we have required folks building in the scenic overlay to provide us with drone photography of the site.
Yeah, Melissa told me.
And we would like to have that. The purpose of it is to make sure that once you do get approval for the site, that trees are not removed afterwards, and so we want evidence of that. We will go ahead with, with, with the site inspection, but I do want to say that as much as, as we like to see passive solar use, this particular site is a very visible site. And as Stuart pointed out, I do believe you want to, before our next meeting, look very carefully to find this tinted glazing, or at least the film to be put on it. Because if you've exceeded the amount of glazing permitted and it's not mitigated, that's an issue that we will have to deal with.
Okay, I'll do my best.
So, all right, so James has agreed to take a look, and I'll go up and take a look.
And Stephanie, once you get everything staked out, you can let me know, and I'll let James and Peter know, and they can arrange to come up.
Okay, question, you mentioned buildings plural being staked out. We don't have the footprint of the Phase 2 house settled yet, and that's not, that's not pertinent to this particular application, so I'd like to just stake out the the dwelling unit that we're proposing right now, if that's okay.
That's fine, because if you're not proposing the other building at this point, then we're not reviewing it. So we will just deal with this one, and the site visit will.
I have it listed as a dwelling and associated improvements, so I have it as singular.
Okay.
All right, Steph?
Yep.
I mean, it's just that we're gonna be aware of the fact that there's going to be more clearing than what we're looking at now. And as John pointed out, Day Road is very, very, very visible, so.
Okay.
All right, so let's, we'll, we'll do the site visit as soon as you can stake out the one you're proposing that's before us.
Yep.
Let us know, and we'll get up there and take a look.
Okay, well, do you mind a quick question about the project? The, the main house, which is the Phase 2 structure, is close to the footprint of the previous house. Is there any? I'm just, I'm, I'm sensitive, you know, on the town's behalf to the visibility of that particular site. You know, it's a, it's at a location on, on the property that, you know, does not have the tree cover that I was describing is, is the condition up at the cabin, which is further uphill. Would the considerations around that proposal, when we do bring it to you, have, would the fact that there was a residence there previously offer any grandfather status to a project that's proposed of new construction on a site, on the same site?
No, not at all, not at all. We, we look at the new, at the new building under, under the current code, scenic overlay code, and I'm just being really honest with you that the town is very, very concerned about people building up on our mountains and making it visible to everybody else. And it's a big issue, and
I, I appreciate that candor, and we want to respect the, the restrictions that you, that you're placing, because we, you know, we respect them as well, so I just want to help our client make the right decision about how to, you know, what, what, how to proceed if there is the idea of developing a second site on the property. So, you know, to be discussed if, if we do present that to you as another application.
Okay. All right, well, we'll, we'll take a look and then we'll review it again.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
All right, so, next on our agenda.
Thanks, Steph.
You okay, Melissa?
We're good.
Okay.
Thanks, Melissa.
Yeah, thank you, sir. The next on our agenda is the Lineman Institute of the Northeast Inc., which is Special Use Permit 21-0383, and this is a second sketch plan review of a site plan review application for modifications to site plan to create an outdoor training facility in the R8 zoning district located at 1700 Sock Hill Road in Woodstock. And Donald is the site rep, and I just want to remind the board that this is the site of the old Xena School. And we've looked at it at the first sketch review, and a couple of things were brought up by some board members, and one of which is that there is a small creek that empties into the Sock Hill. And it came to our attention that we want to make sure that however that creek is crossed, that it's done in compliance with our water course and wetland law to make sure that we're not getting any any debris or any silt or anything going in the Sock Hill. So if Donald is here?
Yes, I'm here.
If you want to go ahead and tell the board what you've got going on, please do so.
Okay, so what you see, basically, the school itself will remain intact the way it is. We're just gonna redo the inside. Down in the field, you can see across the driveway that crosses the creek, the basketball court, the playground, so past there is what our proposal is. We're looking for, I think, the, the sketch 150 by 300-foot area to set our outdoor training facility, which consists of utility poles and all associated hardware with the utility poles.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, how did the school deal with that creek? Are there culverts?
There's, yeah, it's, it's built for trucks to cross over it. There's a big huge culvert down there, and it's blacktopped across it. I'm not driving trucks down in there. It's basically foot traffic for us.
Yeah, if I turn off the water thing, maybe we see the culvert, because the way I have it now, it's kind of blocked. Let's see.
Judy, while you're doing that, would it be okay?
Judy, while you're doing that, would it be okay if I asked Donald a question?
Sure.
Yeah, Donald, Stuart Lipkin, I met you at the site inspection. So you say you're not going to be driving trucks across the, you know, the culvert and blacktopped area. So if you're bringing the poles in for installation by truck, how are you going to get them onto the land?
The tractor, it's a single tractor that we use to mow the lawn.
So it goes across here then?
That's correct. That's where the culvert is, basically where you're moving your little hand back and forth.
Yeah, by the, by the play area.
Yeah, that's a basketball court and then the play, the little old, you know, kid's playground is next to the basketball.
Right, but, but can you just give me a little more of an explanation how you're going to get them across that area? Do you do one at a time? You can do?
No, the tractor only takes one at a time, Stuart. It'd be one at a time.
So is the weight of that process a concern in terms of crossing over to culvert? Yeah, I had an idea that they might all be on one truck and then it might collapse.
No, no, they'll be unloaded in the parking lot on the pavement and then brought down with the tractor from there.
I got you. Thank you for answering that. And Peter, if I may, there was also discussion at the, at the first, at the last meeting about the creek and also the marsh area that's closer to Xena Road. There's a marsh area that's shown as a wetland. And there has been concern on the board about that there not be any disturbance of not only the creek and the marsh, but whatever the buffers are that are protect them, there's buffered areas in it. But Peter, maybe you can weigh in on that. I'm not really sure what the distance is, whether it's 100 feet or 30 feet or what. Does anyone on the board actually know what the buffers are?
Well, in Woodstock, all wetlands have 100 foot buffer. I don't know if that has been delineated as such, so that would be where that delineation mark is or not.
Well, if.
What I just did is 49 meters where my little crossbar is here. That's 49 meters.
From what?
From the, from here, there.
Okay, but that's not a delineated boundary yet, so we don't.
No, no, it's not. I'm just looking at what the length is. Actually, it's, it's more than that. A hundred feet is about 30 acres, right? 30 meters.
Yeah.
But in this case, they're not developing anything. They're, they're not building any buildings or, or developing. And that's if, in, under the wetlands law, restricted activity is that kind of development. So I don't think that what they're doing.
Yeah.
Don, what the board had expressed was that if we take your site plan and apply the wetlands, kind of put them together, like the maps that Judy's showing where the wetlands are, that culvert. So if we take your site plan and kind, help me out, board, if I'm not, I'm just trying to speak layman's terms. So if we put the map of where it all is and then kind of make sure that it's away from where you're going to be doing the pole stuff and know, so then the planning board will know that it won't be disturbed.
I mean, the field's like 10 times bigger than I need it to be, so you just tell me how far away I have to be. And that's what I'll make it.
I think you want to be in the middle.
Yeah. I don't really want to be in the middle because I've had people maybe interested in the soccer field part of it for, for soccer leagues and, and, you know, for the youth and possibly the ball field. So I, I'm trying to, I can push it further away from the creek without a problem though.
So are you talking about more up here or more down there?
No, away from the front, in the back. So you, most of it, you probably won't even be able to see from the road.
Okay, I would suggest you get yourself a long tape and get yourself 100 feet away from this edge.
Well, that's not the creek.
That's, that's true. That's not the creek. That's.
No, the Sauk Hill, the Sauk Hill Creek is another, probably 200 foot past where the tree line is.
Right, right.
Oh, quite right.
Yeah.
Quite right.
Our concern is there's a, the creek runs the entire, pretty much parallel to the parking lot from Xena Road to the back. So it's that whole length that you have to stay away from, not just the culvert crossing.
Right, yeah, no, I get it. I mean, like I said.
So somewhere out here is probably okay.
100 feet is easy to stay away from that small creek that runs through there.
Okay, and also, can, how about the marsh itself? Can you stay?
100 feet, I can, like I said, I can push it up by the playground without a problem.
Okay.
All right, no problem. The Sauk Hill itself has a 100 foot buffer, but their application is not involving construction, which is prohibited in, in the buffer. So they're not really limited to that. My other question, though, that Stuart is trying to get at, you're going to bring the poles across the culvert one by one or whatever, but don't you have to have big trucks to set the poles up and down?
Well, we'll set the poles down in the field by hand.
Really?
That's part of the point, isn't it?
Okay.
Isn't that part of the point that they learn to set them?
We, we set poles by hand and we, you know, we, we do run the trucks, but we do most of our work by hand. They climb the poles all day long. No bucket trucks, you know, they, they can get that after class.
How do they get, how do they get them to vertical?
We push them up in the air.
Whoa.
You can come down and watch. I'll let you know as soon as we start setting them.
I, I would actually like to. Okay.
Okay, no problem. As I said earlier, when we first came up, I, I just had a pole replaced on my property and it was quite an event with trucks, but okay.
So Peter, what, what do we need the applicant to do in terms of revising his drawing?
Well, our concern was driving big trucks across that, that tributary. But if they're not going to do that, if they're just going to use it as it is, then then I, I I don't see a problem with it. I guess the final answer would be with Ellen. She's the Wetlands Water Course Inspector. If she is good with it. So.
We have a referral for Ellen.
Right.
Something in the, in the permit that specifies that they can't.
Absolutely, I can do that. It'd be in the resolution. Just a site plan review. There's not a permit.
Okay.
Why don't we make a note for that, just to take care of it as a condition in the resolution?
You got it.
Is that all right, the rest of the board?
Yeah, yeah, sounds good. Now, the only other issue that came up was if they ever intend to do anything else with the rest of those building, that building, which he said himself, they're only using a small percent of it for, for classes. Just to be aware of the fact that if, if they propose to do anything else in the building, it would require another review, that's all.
Right. The use of the building is actually not referred to us, as I recall. It's just a referral to establish the pole areas on the.
Because it's, because it's, it's a training facility.
Yeah, it's a school.
Same use.
permitted use.
But if they wanted to rent office space or something like that, then what?
Well, then we have to go through the, you know, through the building inspectors regarding.
Zoning, it's, it's.
But that wouldn't come before us until.
I have one, one other question. It was indicated by Donald that they may be using other trucks to, with lights on them if there's going to be night training things. And could you just, Donald, could you just address that and whether those trucks are heavy, light, or would they, they would pose a problem crossing?
Yeah, well, there's, there's no night work, so there's, there's nothing happening at night. We're just there for 14 hour days. So I don't, I don't know what you mean about the lights in the truck.
Well, we had, I, I had asked you whether there's ever, whether there's going to be night classes, and you said you weren't planning on that, but if we did that, we, you would use these utility truck lights only, no fixed light.
Oh, that's right, yeah. Well, yeah, the parking lot has parking lot lights. I mean, it's lit up at night.
My only question now is if you have one of those trucks with lights on and crossing the culvert, would the weight of that truck cause any problem in terms of?
No, the trucks won't be crossing the culvert.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other board members have any questions regarding the Lineman's project? John?
Oh.
All right, I have a question. Do, are we okay with their site plan the way it is? Or do we want to include the water please?
I, I think it's fine if they're going to just use what they've got there.
Thank you.
I mean, if they ever had to build a better bridge or something, they would go through the building department, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I guess, Melissa, if you want to get their resolutions set up, we will deal with that later, right?
We should, I can schedule a public hearing as soon as I can.
Okay.
Sound good?
That sounds good.
Yeah.
Don, I'll be in touch once I kind of know what's going on with the schedule and we'll schedule you for a public hearing.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Don, I sent you back that form. Just check your email. We can talk later.
I sent it back. Do you sign?
Oh, you're so good. No, you didn't sign the bottom. She signed it. You didn't sign it.
Yeah, that's right. I sent it back with my signature on it as well.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so the next one on our agenda is the 16 Year Hill Road LLC, Special Use Permit 21-0378A, and this is the second sketch plan review of a site plan review application for modifications to existing site plan to install garage bays in the L1 zoning district located at 16 Year Hill Road in Woodstock. And Michael Lockwood is the rep, and we went through this a couple of times and I think we came down to the issue was if you're just doing those garage bays and then that's all we need to review.
That's correct. And we, we submitted, we submitted with the, just the garage bays as you requested, and we also submitted some lighting specifications as well for some wall packs.
Does any members of the board have any questions for Michael regarding this application?
No.
All right, well, then I guess, Melissa, we can schedule him for a public hearing when you get a chance.
Um, they had asked to waive the public hearing because there was already a building there and it's the same dimensions. So that's up to you guys. But they had asked to waive the public hearing because it's basically, it's in the same footprint and they're only doing the garage bays.
I would think so. How does everybody on the board feel? Can we waive a public hearing on this?
This is Stuart. My view is that we shouldn't because there's a number of houses proximate to the parcel and I don't want to presume that they wouldn't have something to say about it.
Good point.
This is, this is Ian Venti here, the property owner. Hi, guys. Good to see you again. You know, we're, we're just trying to keep this moving in the interest of keeping our business growing, as you know. Yeah, that's why we called everybody out in the beginning, just to try to understand what any reservations would be. It was my understanding that because this is the same use as before, we're not really changing anything. If anything, it's nicer. I mean, what is there, what would anybody have anything to say? I don't understand.
I'm not in the minds of the neighbors. I just think because they're so close by and there's even sightlines across, I think they should have the opportunity to come in or not come in. It's more, it's a process issue really, but as a board, I don't think we should presume that there wouldn't be something that someone would want to weigh in about or ask about. I'm not looking to delay this unduly or anything. You know, I appreciate the concerns of the business owner. But I, my own view, it's just my view, is I think we ought to do the hearing and get it on as quick as possible.
What do the other members feel? John?
Is this replacement of anything?
There, there was a building there. We just tore it down and we're but it was like, it was just dilapidated. So we tore down what was there and we're rebuilding what was there, basically. We're putting garage, we're putting a garage door on the outside where there was just a man door, but you know, that's the main difference.
So this would be on the north end of the building?
Uh, it's in the back side. Michael, do you know the?
I'm trying to pull up my, have my site plan here. Hold on.
It's, it's facing the back fence.
The only thing to, to Stuart, the only thing I can say to you, Stuart, is that it's own light industrial. So the neighbors have to realize that it's, it's an industrial area.
I'm sure they do.
That was our expectation, just to be frank. When we moved in, bought these buildings, that was, you know, that's what we were expecting. We're a manufacturing company. We're buying manufacturing buildings.
But the question that Stuart brings up is just a process, and that's why I'm asking the board members if, if we feel it just to do the process that the public should be, or the neighbors should be allowed to ask questions. It's up to the board if you, if your board members feel, I, I agree that it's, it's of no change of use. It's it's minor in scope.
Is the building like literally the same footprint as the previous building?
Yes.
And the same height?
Uh, I don't, I'm not aware of what the height was previously because I, I didn't know the building previously.
I thought Ian was, I thought it was the same in height. I didn't think it changed.
It's, it's the same, the highest point is the same highest point. The, the back one had like a tapered, slight taper to the back. So we're squaring that off, but it's not changing the, like, I don't know the technical term for you guys, but it's not changing the sightline.
Okay.
I don't think it needs public hearing, my personal view, but.
What'd you say, James?
I don't think it needs public hearing, is my personal view.
Uh, John, what do you think?
I think we can waive it.
Okay, well, that, that makes a consensus, so I agree. Let's wait for the review.
Angus?
And.
Judith, are you good with that?
Yes, I am.
I vote a eight, but it looks like the waiver carries.
Well, it's wonderful, guys. We appreciate it.
Guys, you know, it's a little bit more paperwork for me. I, we got to come up with the resolution and the board has to approve it, but we're only looking at two weeks as opposed to for the resolution and then we'll, we'll get you going, okay?
Right.
Oh, that's fantastic. We're going to, we're going to start planning everything, guys. It's a big help. We can keep the train moving here. So thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Okay, so before we get to the next one, I know Stuart said that he had to leave, I think at, at 8:20, I believe he said.
That's right.
And I wanted to make sure Stuart was here for the Crown Castle review. So Stuart, if we do the next one, which is the Dennis Abbey Sketch Plan Review, will you, can we get through that and still have you here for the Crown Mobile?
It's really just a matter of how fast that is and, you know, I'm glad, as long as I can, but I really have to leave at 20 after.
I'm just hoping to see, is Dennis on? Dennis is on. If it's okay with Dennis and Don, and if they have time, they can wait. We can ask them and you can do Crown Castle first.
Dennis, is that okay with you if we?
Dennis, Don, would it be okay if we heard a case before we saw yours?
Oh, I do have another meeting that they're waiting for me on, so.
Thanks, Don, for answering.
All right, well, let's go ahead. The next case is Dennis W. in Abbey Cave, Brasic and Bonnie Andretti. And the planning board case number is 21-1200A. This is a sketch plan review of a lot line revision application to reconfigure parcel lines between three lots within, with the transfer of 0.002 acres in the HR zoning district located at 11 and 15 Library Lane in Woodstock. So Donald, if you want to tell us what you've got in mind here, please go ahead.
What we have is the property owners want to straighten out the property lines because of fencing and that. And that's basically just all it is. They want to Bonnie Andretta wants to put a gate for her driveway. And so we met out there with both property owners, with both property owners attorneys. And everybody came to an agreement as to these little slivers of boundary line adjustments. So that's why we're before the planning board.
All right, well, it sounds pretty minor. I believe that we should take a look. Get, it's easy enough to get to. If someone can volunteer, it's on Library Lane. If we could get a volunteer to take a look at that, it sounds very minor, but I still think we need to take a look at it. So can we get a volunteer for? So can we get a volunteer for site plan?
I can do that, Peter. Stuart here.
All right, Stuart, great. Yeah, that would be great. I, it sounds very, very minor and I'm sure it's, it's uh, not an issue, but I, I think we should take a look and um, and see what they have in mind.
Is, Don, is this staked out?
Yes.
Okay. Well, Stuart will take a look and uh, and we'll get it back to you as fast as we can, Don. It, it doesn't sound like an issue at all, so.
Stuart, if you have any questions at all, you can call my office and I, I can run out there if I need to.
Okay. Could you tell me your name again full, please?
My name is Donald Brewer. It was Brewer-Lancevin.
Okay. All right.
I can give you the information, Stuart, too. You can just email me.
Please do. Just send me his contact info. Thank you so much.
Got it. Thanks, Don.
We'll get it as fast as we can for you, Don.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so now we have the next on the list is the town of Woodstock Crown Castle on behalf of T-Mobile. Special use permit twenty-one dash zero-three-two-two-zero and special use permit twenty-one dash zero-three-six-one-D. And this is a sketch plan review of a site plan review and special use permit applications for modifications to site plan to replace four antennas and add two new antennas and accessory equipment on existing cell tower located in the R eight zoning district at one-two-two California Quarry Road in Woodstock. And the site rep is Richard. Um, so John is here with us. And so I would like, uh, John, since he is knowledgeable about this particular site and cell tower and the, and the technology itself, if, John, if you would mind asking the applicants the questions, because I do not know anything about it.
Earlier, we did ask regard, anything regarding five G and we were told that five G was not going on the tower. Is that still correct?
Uh, that is incorrect. The antennas and the upgrade that are being proposed here tonight will be five G capable. Um, all modifications, um, I shouldn't say all, many modifications happening across the East Coast right now. Um, just about ninety-nine percent of them involve upgrades to antennas that are five G capable.
Since five G is a small cell system, where else would you be putting cells or antennas?
That's a question that I really can't answer. Um, I'll, I'll frame it this way. I know right now there are no other proposals um, for upgrades within Woodstock. Um, I'll say this much too, just to, to kind of better define what you said, a small cell. A five G small cell is a piece of equipment that is installed on a utility pole and typically in the public right of way. Um, typically on an existing utility pole or sometimes new poles need to be installed. Um, and like I said, typically those are much lower frequency. The engineering behind them is, is different than whatever proposing here in terms of the antennas on the existing cell tower. Um, small cells are utilized really in bigger urban areas where they, they need to enhance the signal and it's not feasible to build a new tower or to um, propagate a necessary signal to provide adequate cellphone service, if that makes sense. Uh, the upgrades uh, to the cell tower that we're proposing here tonight do essentially, uh, in layman's terms and the, the, to make a long story short, they do the same thing that a small cell does, uh, just on a much bigger scale in terms of the coverage area. I know there's one tower in, in Woodstock and the reason for the upgrades is because, or the reason for the proposal is because T-Mobile wants to make sure that their signal carries throughout the town of Woodstock and the surrounding areas. So the users, you know, obviously don't have any drop calls, have a good experience with their cellphone. Um, cellphone and data and, and signal coverage are the two main components of that. So that's, I, I hope that kind of answers your question. Um, at this time, you know, I, I, I don't, I represent Crown Castle. I don't work for T-Mobile. I don't know where they're proposing to install in other locations. I, I will tell you that these um, upgrades, if you will, to new equipment, to new antennas are happening across the country, really. Um, specifically in New York and Connecticut, there is, I handle, I've seen a, a big uptick within the last, I would say, year or so. Um, with this sort of work and this very similar scope of work to what we're proposing here today.
Frequency and power levels, Rich?
The frequency and power levels? Um, I don't know those off the top of my head. I can pull up the drawings. Let me see. We did supply a uh, EME report with the initial filing, uh, and a radio RF compliance report. Um, let me just see if I can pull it up. I don't know if you'll have a copy of that. Um, it's completed by a third-party engineering company. I will say this much, the signals and um, frequencies that are being proposed are well within FCC regulations. Um, they all pass um, the necessary propagation levels and obviously that's federally regulated, uh, that they have to be within certain limits. And those all pass. So I guess because I'm not an engineer, I won't try to speak to a lot of the engineering specifics of it. What I will say is I refer you to the report that was submitted with the initial filing um, back on May fifth. They contained the EME report that had uh, all that technical data, what the output for each proposed antenna, what that will be. And it also showed the propagation area showing that we were well within um, the FCC's allowable limits.
So you really don't know what band they'll be operating, are they sixteen hundred megahertz and the two-point-four gigahertz? What, what, where are they operating?
So you're, you're talking, where are they operating within the frequency band? Is that, I, I'm trying to understand the reason why you would, why you would.
On what frequency will you be operating?
What frequency would be operating? The, um, which antenna are you referring to? Are you asking about? I have the table in front of me right now, the antenna, make and model.
So there's multiple antennas with multiple, with different frequencies?
Yes. There's a six-hundred and seven-hundred megahertz. I just pulled up the table right now. Forgive me.
Relatively low. All right.
Right. That's, that's for one antenna. Um, the APXVA LL twenty-four antenna that's being proposed. Um, the HBXX dash sixty-five uh, comscope antenna that's being proposed is a nineteen-hundred megahertz bandwidth.
No two-point-four gigahertz equipment?
No, not that I'm seeing on this table right here. And again, a caveat, all my comments, well, I'm not an engineer. We had the engineers put the report together. Um, was a copy of that report made available to you, John?
I would love to see it.
Okay. Um, I know I submitted copies, um, in the initial filing, um, but we can certainly get a copy to you to take a look at.
Problem here is I don't feel technically qualified to evaluate these kinds of things. I don't know how other people feel.
Well, I agree with you, Judy. I, I don't know anything about it. That's why I haven't, John asked the questions.
Well, part of this was the original questions from months ago had to do with installation of five G. And we were told there would be no five G. Now there is.
Yeah.
Can I, uh, just for my own curiosity sake, um, who told you that there would be no um, five G installed on the tower?
That, that was an.
Melissa, who was at that meeting?
That was in an earlier application by Crown Castle on behalf of a different wireless carrier. That was on behalf of Verizon. And I don't know that Rich Sajak was, was the person speaking to us at that time. It was Scott Olson or someone on behalf of Scott Olson. Uh, so it was either Scott or somebody else. So that's my recollection, but.
Rich, you were sharing this tower with Verizon?
Verizon does have antennas on this tower, uh, currently, correct.
Who else is up there?
Uh, T-Mobile is up there.
That's them probably.
Let him answer the question, please.
Let me just see if I have it on the drawings. I think the drawings just call out the existing antenna um, locations. I don't know if they have in carrier. Uh, T-Mobile, it's like um, I'm showing three sets of antennas. So I know T-Mobile and I know Verizon. Um, let me just find out who the other one is. Bear with me one second. I can find that for you.
I have to say, my confusion is that it's some couple of years ago, it was my understanding that there was a moratorium about five G in Woodstock. I don't know if that is a reality or not.
I um, to that and Peter, I, I had a conversation with Bill McKenna, uh, a couple of months ago in this first kind of hit my desk. Um, because I was involved actually in a project a significant amount of time ago, probably about a year ago, um, that involved Verizon upgrades, but there was no antenna work. It was strictly just equipment. Um, they weren't, they weren't touching their antennas. They were just kind of swapping out some radios. Um, and I remember a comment that, that you all had made regarding a, a, a moratorium or any sort of five G um, legislation. So I, I called Bill and I just said, you know, I just had an open conversation with Bill and I said, you know, is, is there anything official? Um, you know, because obviously seeing this T-Mobile proposed upgrade, I wanted to, you know, it kind of just had that conversation upfront. And he said, and he informed me at that time that there was no um, no legislation, no um, acts or laws or, or anything passed that would limit uh, five G deployment in Woodstock.
So I'd like to ask you personally, if I could.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Um, Rich, I want to know, uh, you mentioned small cells being installed on tops of uh, utility poles or other poles in usually in public rights away. For um, for T-Mobile to establish uh, functional five G in the town of Woodstock, what additional infrastructure would have to be installed in the town besides these antennas that are, that you're proposing to put up on the tower itself?
I don't have an answer to that question. Uh, I'm, I, I don't know T-Mobile's future plans. Um.
Do you have knowledge as to what, as to whether there has to be additional infrastructure installed at other locations in the town, whether on tops of uh, streetlights or otherwise in order for the five G to work?
I do not. I, I'll say this much too. This is kind of going off of general industry knowledge and what I know about the area of, of Woodstock. You have one cellphone tower in the town. It's not a large area comparative to the city of Boston, the city of, of New York. Um, to, to, you know, big urban areas. Um, the ability to propagate a signal across the um, town of Woodstock is much easier than those areas. I don't know and I can't speak to T-Mobile's future plans and their signal and, and necessarily how much infrastructure they would need. Uh, all I can speak to is the fact that they are looking to enhance their signal at this time in the town of Woodstock using the existing infrastructure uh, that's in place.
That would be the cell tower.
That would be the cell tower. You're correct.
If I can just follow up, Peter, that's all right. Um, uh, in your materials in your application, there's like some uh, diagrams and pictorial material, which is generally talks about five G and they talk about nodes being built uh, to bring the signal, I guess, closer to homes or whatever it is. Um, do you know if those are the same things as what are known as repeaters or are those different?
Uh, I do not and I would, for the sake of this conversation and the sake of my application that was submitted, um, I, I apologize if that infographic that was submitted, uh, kind of explaining five G led you down the, the, the small, the, the small cell questions. Again, I can't speak to T-Mobile's proposal um, in terms of their signal, in terms of what their future network needs will be. Um, and whether or not small cells will need to be installed in Woodstock. Um, again, I'm not an engineer. I'm not going to talk to technical feasibility. I've worked on both small cells and tower applications for multiple years now. Um, so in terms of engineering specs pursuant to this particular application that I submitted, um, I can talk to those. Uh, obviously we submitted a electromagnetic engineering report showing the, the frequency structural analysis showing that the tower could support the, the, the proposed antenna. Um, you know, uh, installation. I would just ask that, you know, for the sake of this particular application to kind of, you know, uh, answer T-Mobile's question regarding the proposed antenna installation. Um, did we talk about that? Because I, because again, I can't honestly answer any questions pursuant to T-Mobile's future installations and future plans.
Okay, fair enough. But let, let me ask, ask a couple more questions and I beg the board's indulgence. Um, does T-Mobile, are they in a position to present an engineering witness who might be able to answer whether they've conducted, yet conducted studies of the town so that they could tell us whether from their point of view, um, they would need to do further infrastructure installations in the town and what those would consist of? Because obviously from the town's point of view, it seems the concern is, I just lost a video. I'm not sure why. Uh, of the witness. Is he still there? Yeah, there we are. There you are. I don't know what happened. Okay. He went up in the corner. Anyway, sorry. You know, from the town's point of view, the, the changes that are being proposed on the cell tower are one piece of a process, possibly. And I would want to know that, you know, so that I understand what it is we're being asked to approve and what the ensuing um, developments might, might have to be considered down the line.
Sure. If, if I, if I could just respond to that real quick, I, I understand the concern. Um, let me put it to you this way. Um, we don't know what the landscape of technology is going to be a month from now, six months from now, a year from now. Um, clearly a year ago, we didn't know that five G was going to be deployed. We, we had forecasting that said it was going to be, uh, everyone said it's coming, it's coming, it's the next latest and greatest thing. And now it's being rolled out and, and obviously these upgrades are taking place across the country. I guess my point is to say that if the rate that technology is evolving, um, I, I can certainly ask T-Mobile the question. I, I just, and, and bigger picture saying, I don't know how accurate a forecast anyone can, can propose on that. If you're looking for a propagation map to show T-Mobile's signal across the town of Woodstock currently, that might be something I can get for you. Um, and to show you, you know, their, their signal coverage at the current time. The bigger picture is the reason they just want to enhance their signal and users of, of T-Mobile devices and their service in the, in Woodstock. That's the reason for the upgrade. Um, but if you would prefer to see a propagation map to understand their, their signal and how it lays out across the town, that's reasonable and, and I can certainly ask them for that.
John has his hand up there. John?
So you can provide us with a propagation study of what you have there currently and a prospective propagation study?
I can, I certainly ask T-Mobile for that. Yes. If that's something that the, would, would, you know, the board would be interested in seeing, we can certainly run that by our engineers and, and like you said, we're, we're talking about T-Mobile here and their, their signal. Um, I can certainly get that for you.
Did you also, uh, this is Stuart Lipkin again. Would you be able to find out from the engineers or at least ask them um, uh, whether they anticipate any further infrastructure installations in order to bring the five G up to speed?
Sure. I, I can ask.
Please. And are these uh, uh, in-house engineers or are they outside consulting firms? You know?
Uh, they're, in terms of uh, Crown Castle or um, when you say in-house versus uh, third-party, I'm just trying to understand the question.
Well, are they T-Mobile uh, uh, employ, employees of T-Mobile or are they outside firms contracted?
No, they're outside firms. Let me, um, let me ask this question. I know I submitted an application with multiple copies of the documentation. Have you all been, um, have you all seen that?
I've seen it, but uh, clearly I don't understand it, but I've seen.
There's a certain amount of Mego. You know about Mego?
I mean, here, here's the situation. The town of Woodstock does not have good cellphone coverage. And believe me, I work over the whole town and many times have no cellphone coverage. Uh, we can't even get GPS to work. So the town would like to have better coverage. I don't know that this is providing that or if it's just making what exists better. Um, so then I agree with Judy that uh, you know, we want better cellphone coverage in the town, but I do not know the technology of what you're discussing to know whether we should approve or not approve. I mean, yes, we want to make it better. Um, and I don't understand the five G issue. I just got a new repeater in my house, uh, Verizon, because I don't have cellphone service here on Hale Mountain. So I have a uh, extender and the new extender is five G. I mean, so um, so you know, I'm kind of confused about the whole thing.
Peter, one of the, this is Stuart Lipkin again. Um, one of the things that's driving my question about whether these, there's, there's additional equipment that has to be put in, whether they're considered repeaters or not, is that uh, the town does have a provision, not only regulating the siting and installation of cell towers, but also there's a separate provision requiring a repeater, special use permit before a repeater can be, can be installed. At least it's the way I read it. And so I'm trying to get my head around what is a new question for me as to whether the town's code has a permitting process already in place to cover whatever additional infrastructure uh, installations might be required. And that's why I want to find out from the applicant, what additional infrastructure installations are they? what additional infrastructure installations are they anticipating will be needed in order to bring their service to the public on a 5G?
Hey, I will tell you that T-Mobile, it is their belief and their understanding that these 5G capable antennas are able to provide that service to the surrounding area around the cell tower in the town of Woodstock. Now, at what degree, at what serviceability, it is their belief that it's serviceable, that it's going to provide a service that is adequate, that's going to make them look good. They want to provide a decent quality product and their product is cell phone service. In terms of your question about future installations and what they will need in the future in terms of infrastructure, it always goes back, I'll tell you this much first, that the reason Woodstock has a monopane cell tower is to serve the town of Woodstock and it is always not, I don't speak for the carrier. Ninety-five percent of the time, the carrier would prefer to install an existing infrastructure so that one cell, the cell tower that town of Woodstock has, T-Mobile is going to utilize that as much as they possibly can. They don't want to install new cell towers. They don't want to, I know that nobody wants to put in small cells. Sometimes, again, in case that I mentioned, the city of New York, New York City, urban areas where a signal cannot travel, there's tall buildings. There's things in the way and there's a densely populated area where there's many, many, many people using their cell phones, consuming data. To deliver a quality product, you have to deliver something, you know, extra to provide the signal. So that's the reason for those. So again, this is just me speaking personally right now from my experience. I would not anticipate any small cells being installed in Woodstock. I can't speak to that though, and I'm I'm happy to ask the question. I can certainly ask the question.
I want you to go back and ask the engineers that question and bring us the answer. Because as you indicated candidly, you're not an engineer and you're really speaking from almost a lay perspective on these technical, technical questions. And I appreciate the position that you're in, but we need to get some answers on that. And also, your own application talks about a fiber connected small cell installation on tops of poles. So are we supposed to ignore that? Are we supposed to take it seriously? I'm taking it seriously until there's a representation from an engineer.
Well, again, again.
Then what we're dealing with.
The infographic that I provided was simply to provide knowledge on 5G and how it works. That does not, that is separate from the application that is being submitted. I know that the town previously, as I said, from my previous experience, the town had questions about 5G and concerns about 5G. So the supplemental materials that were presented with the application. And I'm curious, I know you Stuart, did you see a copy of the application in its totality, the construction drawings, the electromagnetic report?
I got a package. It was many pages and this was included within the documents that were submitted. So from my perspective, it's part of the application.
And sure, and, and again, and to clarify, and I understand your point, and to clarify the point on that, it was to educate you all on the 5G and how it works.
You educated me and now I need to know, are you going to be doing that?
No, the short answer is this application is not going to be doing utility poles with fiber. This particular application is indicated in the construction drawings, the cover letter that outlined the project and the applications that were filled out, you with antenna upgrades.
Right. But I, I want to know, and again, it's the last time I'll ask it, is whether T-Mobile presently, their engineers anticipate needing to do these other installations. I understand you're not asking for permission to do them today. You're only asking about the change out on the tower of the antennas and putting in a couple of new antennas. But, you know, if your, your application has already told the planning board that this is how 5G works and that you need these small cell installations on top of street poles. So it doesn't do you any service to then tell me, well, we can ignore that. You've asked us to consider that. And so I need to know. That's all. And I hope you don't mind my pressing that point, but I'm.
No, no, that's fine. And, and I apologize for the confusion. I will ask the board tonight then. And I apologize for the confusion, Stuart. I will ask the board then tonight.
I would like to, I would like to ask a clarification.
I don't feel confused. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Judy.
My clarification question is, what does the 5G that you are proposing give T-Mobile if they don't do the further work? This seems like the camel has its nose under the tent.
This gives them a better signal in and around the town of Woodstock. It allows their users of their devices to have better data capacity, better signal and faster turnaround times or latency, I guess, lower latency on their device.
Without, without any further development, that is still the case?
Correct. Yes, that is the case.
That's your understanding, but.
No, that, that is the case. I, I know that to be true. My point was that I think the confusion with the infographic is that the small cells are used typically, typically more in urban areas. This particular application that I submitted was independent of itself for tower upgrades or antenna upgrades to the tower. These antennas are going to work by themselves on top of the tower to provide a better signal in and around the area of Woodstock.
To Stuart's point, and John can, John, go ahead, John.
Well, I'd like to, you know, kind of re-ask a question. You're going to provide us with propagation studies for what you currently have? And what would be with these modifications? Is that correct?
Yes, I can certainly go back to our, to our team and ask for those maps for the, just to clarify your comment to, for the proposed antenna modifications, the antenna modification of the existing, existing cell tower that I'm proposing tonight. I can show you the propagation maps, the difference between what is currently up there on the tower and the difference between the proposed antenna installations. I can go back and ask T-Mobile, ask, ask a team of engineers to provide those maps for you.
Okay, number one, you would be operating at a higher frequency than you're currently operating, correct?
I believe so. Again, let me go back and see if I can pull up the frequencies.
Yeah, I saw the frequency chart showing where the 5G was. I wanted to just.
Let me finish the question, Peter. Somehow, if you're operating at a higher frequency and you're at the same tower, you're defying the laws of physics. You cannot get better propagation under those conditions because your higher frequency is going to lose more signal and you're actually not going to increase the propagation area.
Okay, hey, listen, again, I can refer to the application package that I submitted that was prepared by our team of engineers. I can certainly go back to them and ask about the propagation. I apologize that I'm not an engineer. I don't have an engineering degree. I can look back. What I was doing right now is the frequencies are laid out in the reports that were submitted along with the application. So again, I would refer back to those. And all the details are there in terms of the frequencies, what is going to be proposed, what is going to be up there and what is currently up there. And that's kind of what I was looking through.
Simple fact. The higher the frequency, the more the absorption by natural materials, the trees, leaves, those things occur. So when you start going at a higher frequency and you're not increasing the power, which I presume you're limited to by the FCC, how can you possibly give us better propagation? I don't see what this, how this benefits town of Woodstock at all, except that it provides slightly better service in that it's faster downloads to your individual customers. That's all it's doing. It doesn't increase our service area and increasing the service area has always been one of our goals. And I don't see how this does it. Thank you.
John, where, where would you like us to go from here with this case?
Well, I, I don't think we have enough answers to do anything.
Okay.
And I'm looking forward to seeing some of these documents, especially the propagation studies.
So this is Stuart again. I think it, it's clear that the planning board is asking the applicant for additional information in order to be able to assess whether this meets the criteria for approval. And and one of the things that's been identified are the propagation maps for the current configuration as well as what is being proposed. And the other were the questions that I asked for, whether the applicant anticipates any infrastructure installations beyond the changes at the, at the the tower in order to bring 5G to the town. Those are the two things that I have noted. If anyone else has any others, I think we ought to give them a list so that they know what we're wanting to receive.
Good to me.
Did you get all that, Melissa?
Did you get all that, Rich?
Technical.
Richard and I, I think can put our heads together. Richard, we're good.
I, I believe so. There's more I could say, but for the sake of time and the sake of this discussion, I, I think I'm, I think I'm upset. I, I just would encourage the one thing I will say to all members of the board, the application package that was submitted. If you did not see that, I would encourage you all to either reach out to Melissa and, and we'll get you a copy certainly. Many of the engineering questions that were in there regarding frequency were included in that initial submission. Language surrounding the federal law, section 6409 was detailed in that package as well. I don't, I don't know if it's worth getting into that right now. But the fact that this is an eligible facilities request, we can, again, if you, if you haven't seen a copy of that application package, we can certainly get you and a number of the supporting materials and the questions that were asked are included.
Okay, so Melissa, let's set them up for another sketch plan as soon as everybody gets the information, okay?
Hi, sounds good, Rich.
Sounds good.
John, you okay with that or?
Well, I'd like to ask Melissa for the whole package.
Okay, you guys got it, but I know you get a lot with all this.
Yeah. If I want to run my printer for about an hour and a half.
You know what? I have an extra set. Well, I'll, I'll get you a set. You can come meet me and I'll run it out to you next week.
Okay.
All right, I apologize. I have to.
Bye, Stuart. Thank you. Thanks, Rich.
Okay, Richard, thank you so much for coming and explaining this and we'll see you again and hopefully we'll get some more answers.
Sounds good. Thank you all.
Okay, Richard, yep. Okay. So now we have discussions and comments and the first one is meeting in person concerns from the planning board. So I guess, Melissa, we are going back to in-person meetings.
The governor extended through July 5th. I think a majority of the town has all went back to person, in person. But you, you know me and I've tried to be safe for everyone and I keep following the governor. So I'm planning on July 1st being probably our last Zoom meeting because I kind of don't foresee him extending it. So the next meeting, I'm planning it be Zoom unless Supervisor McKenna tells me otherwise. But then, yeah, so I just, I just want to know how you guys feel and what I can do to make you all feel safe.
Well, I should comment that Bill McKenna has not responded to my email.
Don't comment, Judy.
It's a, it's a confusing time, I have to admit. We, the, the state of New York is completely opened. And most places do not require a mask if you've been, if, if you've gotten the vaccinations, which I have. But the funny part of all this is that my wife works for the county in this department and apparently legally you cannot ask anybody if they've been vaccinated. Apparently you can't legally ask that question. So I, so I guess my question, Melissa, is if we have, go back to meetings in person in the, in the, in the Como, are we requiring everybody that comes in to be vaccinated or not? I'm not sure. I don't understand that.
I don't understand that either. Like I told you guys in an email, like I, I plan on wearing a mask and I plan on limiting, you know, we'll, we'll all be in there and still following and I'm going to try to let people in case by case and have seats set far apart. I want to keep everybody safe.
Peter?
Yes, John?
Is a hybrid meeting possible? Now, the reason I'm asking that is I'm going in for surgery on July 8th for my back and I'm going to be laid up for several weeks. And I'd love to be involved in the meetings. But physically being there is not going to be possible for me initially.
Well, John, funny that they, this issue came up a couple of years ago with the ZBA in which the ZBA members, some of the members were going to the meeting on their, on their laptops from home. And somebody questioned the legality of that in the opens meetings law. And I believe that the town attorney said it was legal. So we can check that, but I believe that at the, at the ZBA meetings where several members were attending the meeting via their, their laptops at home, that the attorney said that was legal. I, I don't know anymore about that, but it was my understanding.
And if we get the monitor back?
We don't, there is a, there's one down there, but it's, it's small, but that was what was replaced with what I asked for. I did, I've asked and asked and asked, and now there's a small one down there.
Not going to do any good for us.
Judy, I'm going to take your comment and say my email wasn't answered.
It's, it's, it's complicated. I don't know.
I know.
Okay, so.
Can I ask a question regarding the last was there any progress made with any kind of an attorney for us for this Crown Castle application?
I had reached out to Andrew Campanelli and asked if he would be willing to represent the planning board and consult for us, and he said he would.
Okay.
Steve Romine has also retained Andrew Campanelli, but that really has nothing to do with the planning board. So if you, the planning board choose that you want to go with, as I sent you guys the email, Andrew Campanelli, we can ask Rich Zajak to send some escrow and I can shoot over the application. Andrew Campanelli is a 5G expert legal counsel. I think he would be our knowledge.
So the planning board has to approve getting a an escrow to have that happen, correct?
Yep, yeah.
So, well, we have a few members here with the planning board approve getting escrow placed for this attorney.
My only concern, to be honest with you, is since Steve's opinion on this matter is so well-known, would the, the same attorney working with us and working with him be a problem?
That's a good question.
I'm not saying Steve is wrong. I'm just saying I need to withdraw my own conclusions. If the, if the attorney has a conflict between clients, that's an issue.
Sure is. Is Connor online?
Yes, but he's been very quiet.
Hello.
Hi, Connor.
Connor, do you have an opinion on this one?
Well, I'm, I'm sort of at the same place Judy is, to be honest with you. I mean, yes, I, I, I attended Andrew Campanelli's talk and he seems, you know, very competent. But I I don't know if, if it would be even making us more vulnerable or if it's the kind of thing that could get us in trouble, then we would, yeah, weaken ourselves. But so I don't know. Who, Stu, I'm curious what you think.
Stuart had a lead.
Stu left. He just, he just left like 10 minutes ago. Yeah, I mean, I'm curious to know what he thinks like.
Well, what what about John Lyons?
I could ask him.
A more neutral situation in that we don't run into a potential conflict with an attorney representing both us and Steve.
Yeah, I can, I can definitely, I'll, I'll talk to John next week and see if he's willing to, to definitely consult for this application.
Tell, tell him what the application's all about.
Absolutely. I'm, I'm a fan of John. So I, and I hear your concerns. That's why I called, I made the phone call, I asked.
Okay.
I muted him.
Yeah, I mean, the thing is, I'm not sure at this point whether T-Mobile's in competition with Verizon to provide better service and these guys are battling out competition or whether they're providing the. competition or whether they're providing the town a better service. I, I, I don't.
Well, no, all you have to do is look at their TV ads, you know, T-Mobile's advertising nationwide coverage for 5G and Verizon and the, how do they try to sell it to you is by showing you a map that Verizon doesn't have it. You know, this, you know, for us to get in the middle of a battle between two corporations is nuts.
Well, that was the reason for my comment about the nose of the, the camel's nose under the tent.
Oh, yes, I understand.
I mean, I saw the one page in their, in their presentation, the application that we got that showed the bandwidths and showed the different, you know, this is light, this is visible light, this is X-ray, this is and it showed where 5G was in there, but I, I couldn't tell you whether that's accurate or not.
Well, Peter, as I said earlier, if they're increasing the frequency, that is a problem. Because.
It shortens the bandwidth and longer, it, it shortens the wavelength and longer wavelengths travel better.
No, the shorter the wavelength, the absorption there is. And the higher the frequency is the shorter the wavelengths.
That's right.
The absorption of something as common as the leaves on a tree is a serious consideration when you come to propagation of any radio signal. And that's what it is.
I can verify that, John. I just hooked up uh wifi extenders uh for my property. And I had a technician come up and he had to aim these things exactly. He said, because the leaves, any leaves, any vegetation will, 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 uh, will diminish. So.
Yeah, especially if something is low-powered as a repeater. But what they're talking about is not low-powered.
Right.
So, I mean, I think there's some real serious question.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk to John. Next week and I'll send you guys an email and let you know where we're at. We'll let Rich get us together, the propagation stuff that he asked for and the other questions and um we'll go from there for now. Absolutely.
And we will read the material we've been sent or in the case of John, he'll send it again.
Yeah, wonderful. Um. But just know, I'm going to do everything I can to keep all of you safe and we're all in this together.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next issue we have to deal with is getting uh, an inspection of the Famakers Project uh off of Glasgow.
I can, I, okay, so it's set for Tuesday, which is next Tuesday, the twenty second at four PM and we have quite a few people going. So I just need to know who intends on going from the planning board. And Barry Medenbach will be there and Melissa Meyer and I think possibly two other family members of hers.
I have a question about that, Peter.
Mm-hmm, go ahead Judy.
As I, as far as I understand it, that proposal is exactly the kind of thing that the housing committee's addendum to the moratorium is concerned with. That it's taking a large piece of property and it's dividing it into sprawl. I don't know that we can do anything about that.
That's, I agree with you Judy, but we're going by the existing code and, and their presentation is within the code.
Yeah.
I mean, they kept away from the wetlands, they, you know. Yes, John?
No, I'm just saying you're correct. But at the same time, other communities have managed to put some sort of codicil in effect to where for every so many units of this kind of housing, you're going to build one affordable unit. These are not going to be affordable units.
No.
Not sitting on ten acres. And the, my main concern, I'm really sorry that I just can't participate in this walkthrough. Is coming out onto Glasgow Turnpike. I looked at it again just within the last couple of days. I just coming out onto, because you come around that bend and then you hit that area and T-boning. I can see it.
And people are concerned about speeding and traffic problems already.
Yes, correct.
I, I agree. It doesn't address affordable housing. And it, 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 you know, when we're talking about critical environmental areas, um, if we join those wetlands together, it would completely diminish the amount of lots they could put in, but we haven't. And there's, you know, I just want to get everybody to look. I, um, but unfortunately, we're the only ones that vote, so no matter what the WEC says or looks at or anybody else, it's, it's our vote. So I, but I totally agree with John. It's uh, you, you know, I, I just spoke to, in fact, Melissa put me onto the guy from uh from uh, a town south of here in the Environmental Commission. And he was asking me how Woodstock got the, and so Water Course Law passed and these protections in. And he asked me if there was any uh, uh, you know, opposition to it. And I said, no, the town was definitely wanted to, you know, favor protecting our environment. And we had a comprehensive plan that um basically said that's number one. So we said, wa- was there any objection? I said, yeah, the town supervisor and the town building inspector at the time, not our inspector now, uh, was against it. Because they thought that we had enough protection and we didn't, and it would stop development. Well, now here we are a few years later and they want to put a moratorium on about development. So it's uh, this is going to be the biggest subdivision that I've, John, I, John, you I've probably done them before, but this is the biggest subdivision I've seen in a long time. This is fourteen lots.
Absolutely.
And I, Matt has, Matt Verdicoff has the application and I asked him to try to get me back. I gave him a month. I said, please, by the beginning of July, give me back a memo for the planning board. So fingers crossed we'll get back a memo from Matt, which will at least give us some further insight into this application.
But the, the planning board does have in general, in general standards. The question is, is it in, is it in keeping with the area? Is it in keeping with uh, you know, uh, with the town? And this could be a question of whether it is or not. You know, this isn't the, the IBM development uh era now. And, you know, it's a question of having this kind of development. Is it in keeping with, with Woodstock's uh cop plan and so on, so.
As you can see, there's an awful lot of wetland in there. You already knew that, but I just wanted to put the thing up where people could see it. How they can get fourteen lots out of it, although it is big.
And there's three streams going through it.
There's three, three streams, there's marshes all over the place, including New York State.
And I, I asked them whether they had access to Wilver Road because that would have, as John pointed out, would have perhaps saved traffic going on to, year ago there, onto Glasgow there, but um, they said they did not have access to Wilver Lane. So. All right, well, Melissa, the answer to your question is Tuesday at four o'clock, there will be a site visit by all interested parties.
Yes, and we have, we have quite a few um WEC thought that there could only be less than a quorum, but I know Peter, you watched a thing, a webinar that everyone can go, you just can't really talk about the case and create a buzz. So I did send an email and, and I touched base with Peter Cross, but I believe you all can go for a site visit.
Right.
Just if you get that caller email, that's where that came from. Um, but we have a lot of WECs that would love to come. Laura Ricky, Ricky is actually going to attend too. So the more the merrier. So who can I count on on the planning board? I think James will go for me.
I'll go, yeah.
All right.
And I think Peter's going to go.
Didn't Stuart say he was?
Did what?
Didn't Stuart say he was? I don't remember.
He didn't answer me via email.
Okay, I can't obviously. I wouldn't be much use.
It's, it's going to be a hike, I know. Connor, any shot? You can go?
Unfortunately not. I'm a little bit ride uh dependent at the moment.
Okay, no worries. All right, so James and Peter, and I'm going to make you guys our site reps since I know you're going to go and be there for this. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, I'll be a little late because I usually don't work till four thirty, but I'll get there.
I know, and you know Barry, so I'm not worried. You know, like, you'll find each other. Um, also, I know James went back and forth with White Feather Farms a little bit. Did anything?
He kind of just went away. Where'd they go?
Did they?
Yeah, I never heard anything back. I, I, you were on the email, I think, the last one I sent saying, you know.
Yeah, that was the only one I saw.
Proposed some times, Tuesday, Wednesday. Third time we tried to set something up and then they just went away.
Okay, next week I will send another round of emails. I guess.
Their plans, then they don't need to have the site, you know, so.
Thank you, James, for being so efficient.
That's okay. Just if I made a mistake, I did make a mistake, but I really, if you look at the thread, it's.
No, you didn't. I'm, I'm seriously thanking you for making an effort for site visits. It's, it's hard.
All right, that's fine. I live five minutes away from it, so it's fine.
Perfect.
Okay, so uh, we have to uh make a, excuse me, a motion to approve the draft resolution for Twisted Gypsy. So I, uh, will entertain a motion.
No moves.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then we need to make a motion to adopt a draft resolution for these SDR cases, which I'm going to turn over to Melissa, her favorite, favorite part of the job.
Just want to preface all of this with, this is the last group that is in the planning board office, but there are a few in the mix with which that we had gotten checks for that haven't followed through with inspections or hadn't, so, so there may be a few more, but for the majority, thank you guys. This is the last clump. First is owner occupied. We have three. Jicky M, SUP number twenty one zero six four four, Jicky M Schnee and Matthew Jones. SUP number twenty one dash zero six five four, Megan Holthower. SUP number twenty one dash zero six five five, Catherine Stern.
No moves.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's two, three, Judy's in. I'm sure John isn't. Oh, James is in, so we're good to go.
Okay. This is owner occupied. John, are you A? He usually is for owner occupied.
Yeah.
Connor, you're here.
I said aye.
Sorry, I didn't hear you. Okay, next round. Okay, non-owner occupied. This is a huge list. SUP number twenty one dash zero six three four, Calvin C Woo and Cindy S Lamb. SUP number twenty one dash zero six three five, Darlene A and Peter Griffin. SUP number twenty one dash zero six three six, Kim Loane Pham. SUP number twenty one dash zero six three seven, Joan Sumara and Heather A Barkley. SUP number twenty one dash zero six three eight, Amy Stevens. SUP number twenty one dash zero six three nine, Maria C Garcia and Summer LaPry. SUP number twenty one zero six four zero seven, Nahir Street LLC. SUP number twenty one dash zero six four one, Stefane Varelo. SUP number twenty one dash zero six four two, Richard and Valerie Sofo. SUP number twenty one dash zero six four three, Woodstock Property Inc. SUP number twenty one dash zero six four five, Gretchen and Kevin Skaggs. SUP number twenty one dash zero six four six, William F Hill. SUP number twenty one dash zero six four seven, Belinda Van Vulcanberg. SUP number twenty one dash zero six four eight, Alex Pasquale Yellow. SUP number twenty one dash zero six four nine, No Soap Radio LLC. SUP number twenty one zero six five zero, Jill Gerard. SUP number twenty one dash zero six five one, Claire Richardson and Daniel S Martinson. SUP number twenty one dash zero six five two, Heather Moore Dawson. SUP number twenty one dash zero six five three, Anne Huiwain Chang. Hey.
Okay.
Who's second?
Do you hear a second? I got a second from James. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Heard you, John. I heard you. All right.
I will get the map updated and all circulated.
Okay. All right. All right, folks.
There's one other announcement. Judith Kerman will be reading with the Bird Club forum next Thursday night with the Golden Notebook via Zoom. You can go to uh the Golden Notebook website and get all the information for getting to the Zoom or Bird Club is sending that out too.
And I think we just dropped off some books at the store today.
Terrific, Judith. Thank you.
I asked Mark to bring a few over on his way home.
I'll look for them tomorrow morning.
That's awesome, Judy.
Um, I should also mention that I've been asked by the supervisor to be on the committee that looks at zoning revisions during the moratorium. And I agreed. I'm going to drop a few other things because I'm getting a little over my head. Not the CEA, that's too important to stay on. But a possibly complete street, I'll take a an abeyance, whatever we should call that.
We're grateful for all your work, Judy.
Well, we'll see what's what, but I, you know, I really am going to want the, the members of the board to help me think about these issues because we've been talking about zoning for a long time and certainly, you know, Peter and John have more technical knowledge than I do and I'm one of the old timers.
All right, well, good luck, Judy. We'll help you out as best we can. It's going to be an interesting challenge. I can.
Yeah, but it's an op, it really is an opportunity to get some things done. So.
All right. All right, unless anybody has anything else to add or attend, uh, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Some moves.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, good evening, folks. Have a good evening and.
Thanks, guys.
Bye-bye.
Okay.
All right, see you there next week. I'll see you at some point if you're around.
Well, I'll ask you. Would you, Melissa, did you say something? I, I missed it.
I did.
Okay.
Now it's working. Next week, pop by if you're around.
Oh, you betcha. I will.
I, I'll stay later. I'll come and meet you if it's easy for you to. Just let me know.
Okay, okay.
There's quite a stack and there's the big plan, so let's get them done.
Will do, will do.
Thank you.
Okay, Melissa, have a good evening.
You too.
Good night.
Good night, gentlemen.